Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting and Committee of the Whole meeting. Tonight's City Council meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our Deputy Clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowring? Here. Bruno?
Here.
Ruby? Kilburg?
Here.
Kosarag?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Patchkey?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin our meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance. I'd like to invite our Human Resources Manager, Lauren Newton, to please lead us in the pledge, since Officer Warren said no thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, on a guard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lauren. We jump to item four, folks. Amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and all those items can be enacted with one motion. Is there such a motion? Mr. Marx makes the motion. Excuse me, Alder Person Marx makes the motion. Seconded by Alder Person Patchkey. Jean, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Bowring? Aye. Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Item five, the omnibus agenda, has been approved with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We jump to item number eight. Correct, six. That's on the consent. That was omnibus, I believe?
Yep.
Was mine? Item eight, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask Ms. Fernari to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
For approval for January 2nd, the total expenditures is $1,936,094.75. For January 16th, total expenditures $5,386,127.39.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council packet on the city website.
Alder Person Bruno makes a motion, as he always does, to approve the bills as presented, which are available in the city's council's packet and on the city's website, and seconded offered by Alder Person Mayor. Ms. Fernari, if you dare, please take the roll.
Bowring? Aye. Bruno? Ruby?
Aye.
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The bills have been approved to be paid with a vote of ten in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent. Committee of the Whole, items of business were approved out of the consent agenda. We jump to item 10, presentation of ordinances and resolutions. Item 10A is to consider resolution number 2024-07, approving the four-year collective bargaining agreement between the City of Geneva and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police.
Three.
Should be three.
Three. Yep.
So mine's the only one that's read four? That was a trick question, thank you very much. Congratulations to our officers for next year. A three-year collective bargaining agreement between the City of Geneva and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council. This again is resolution 2024-07. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
I believe that was Alder Person Bruno to make the motion. Alder Person Marx made the second. Any additional information, Stephanie or Ben, you'd like to share prior to vote?
I could just briefly say the contract is included in the packet this evening. The union has ratified the agreement, and the highlights are the wage proposal is a 3% increase for each of the three years of the contract. It is retro back to May 1 of 2023. We think it's a good outcome for all parties, and with that, I will leave it to the council's consideration.
Anyone on the council, any questions for either Ms. Dawkins or Mr. McCready? Ms. Fernari, please take the roll call.
Bowring? Aye. Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-27 has been approved by this council with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero Alder Persons absent. Item 10B, consider resolution number 2024-08, declaring real estate as surplus public real estate and authorizing the city administrator to negotiate the sale subject to certain terms and conditions. Alder Person Bowring makes the motion, seconded by Alder Person Patchkey. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the city owns just over an acre and a half of real estate on the west side of South Forest Street. It's over there by the parking lot that we built a few years ago, and it was acquired for those purposes. You will note that we've already done in 2016 a comprehensive plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, and a planned unit development to allow for the development of the public parking, but a majority of the western portion of this real estate is in the floodplain and cannot be developed. Therefore, we're recommending that that portion be made available for sale based upon the appraised value. So the resolution for your consideration would outline, if you've read it, it outlines the conditions of sale. It authorizes the city administrator to negotiate the sale based on the appraisal report, and then provides for all interested parties to make an offer on the property. Once an offer is made, once we negotiate it, it would come back to the city council, and they can accept a contract proposal to be determined to be in the best interest of the municipality by a vote of two-thirds. And again, it can be no less than 80% of the appraisal price. We've talked about this a few times, but we do have Director DeGroot with us this evening if you have any additional questions.
Any questions for Director DeGroot? If not, any questions in general from Ms. Dawkins regarding this item? We'll take a roll call vote on resolution 2024-08. Ms. Fernari, whenever you're ready.
Bowring? Aye. Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra? Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of ten in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent, resolution 2024-08 has been approved by this council. We jump to public comment, folks. How about new business? How about a motion to adjourn the City Council meeting? Alder Person Kosarag makes the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. We'll take just a moment to transition to the Committee of the Whole meeting, where Alder Person Bruno, I think, will be leading us.
I'd like to call this Committee of the Whole meeting to order for January 16th, 2024. I'm Alder Person Mike Bruno, who serves alongside the esteemed Alder Person Aniis Bowring. Let's see. First item of business is approve Committee of the Whole minutes from December 18, 2023. Do I have a motion? Moved by Bowring, seconded by Patchkey. Any comments, updates, questions? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Items of business. 3A, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a contract with Premier Roofing Design in the amount of $199,000 for skylight replacement and roof restoration at Public Works Facility, 1800 South Street. Do I have a motion? So moved by Mayor? Give it to Kosarag. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the Public Works Building's roof system is from the original construction and expansion. We've had various leaks over the roof's life, and so there were options for replacement and restoration, and we have determined that restoration is a more cost-effective solution at this time. It is estimated to be 25% of the cost of replacement with a similar warranty and expected lifespan. We did publish a bid to apply a restorative coating and replace all the skylights, including a warranty from the coating product manufacturer. There were 10 bids submitted, and the lowest qualified bid was from Premier Roofing Design doing businesses top roofing for $199,000. Top Roofing has been interviewed and confirmed in understanding of the scope of work and provided reference for experience with similar work elsewhere. I would note there was a question regarding this item submitted by council today, and I did not get it responded to, so my apologies. This is a project, while we're looking at future facility improvements, this is a project that we feel is necessary to be done now, and because it's a restoration and not a complete replacement, we believe it still makes sense to do it now and not to wait. But I do have our Facilities Manager with us this evening, Pete Adams. I also have Public Works Director Rich Babica if you have additional questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about this item? Seeing none, sensing none. Anything from the public? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3B, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a contract with Fair Graham in an amount not to exceed $32,000 for Couch Road Lift Station Improvement Design Engineering. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marx, seconded by Kilburg. If I got that right? Any...oh, Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So the Couch Road sanitary lift accepts flow from industrial buildings located around Avril, Couch, and Geneva Drive. The lift station, which was constructed in 1994, was sized based on the comprehensive land use plan and estimated sanitary flows from that area. Since 1994, the lift station has operated comfortably with two of four possible pumps designated for the station. New developments within this area will increase the wastewater flows to the station, and additional pumps and controls will need to be added to the lift station to accept these flows. A design engineering review will be needed to analyze the current and projected pump demand in order to determine the proper size for the new pumps and prepare plans and specifications for bidding and construction. Fair Graham has provided these services for several sanitary sewer projects in Geneva, including flow monitoring rehabilitation and the current design of the sanitary sewer river crossing. We have been satisfied with their work and have negotiated a contract for this improvement. The contract, cost for the contract will be paid for within the existing budget and if needed, a future budget amendment. We do have with us Superintendent Van Gescam, who would be more than happy to answer any additional questions you may have about lift stations and sanitary sewer flows.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the dais? Alder Person Marx?
Just one, are they going to be looking at just adding two or probably replacing the two existing ones? Will they look at the whole layout right now, or is that just...
Yeah, we're going to look at the whole layout as far as maybe increasing the size of one of the pumps that are currently in there, adding another one, at least one more, probably two to give it the full capacity.
But, thank you.
Alder Person Kilburg?
How does the plans for these improvements at the lift station, how does that coincide with General Mills opening their new plant?
Sure. We want to get the plans done this fiscal year so as soon as possible we can go out to bid. When General Mills is operating, we will be close to capacity at that station, but we've coordinated the workflow with them, so when they do discharge, we'll be in good shape.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3C, consider draft resolution awarding contract to Meade Electric in an amount not to exceed $423,555 for Geneva Business Park III general construction. Moved by Bowring, seconded by Mayor. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so speaking of General Mills, bids were advertised and opened for the Geneva Business Park III substation construction project, which is the construction of two 34 KV risers and cable to feed the General Mills expansion. The remainder of the substation construction will be completed...
Hold microphone.
Sorry. On a contract to be awarded at a later date. There were five bids received, and after Stanley Consulting reviewed the bids, Meade Electric was the low bidder. The recommendation is to award the contract to Meade Electric and authorize the city administrator to approve change orders not to exceed 10% of the contract price for a total not to exceed a contract amount of $423,555. With us this evening, we do have Aaron Holton, our Superintendent of Electric Services, if you have additional questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the dais? From the public? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3D, consider draft resolution awarding contract to L&amp;S Electric in the amount of $77,900 for Geneva Business Park I and II substation maintenance. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mayor, seconded by Bowring.
Mic is on. Bids were opened for preventative maintenance at the Geneva Business Park I and II substations. We received two bids. The project consists of a five-year maintenance cycle on the substation equipment and transformers at the Geneva Business Park substations. So the low bidder was L&amp;S Electric in the amount of $77,900. Again, Aaron Holton is here this evening, so if you have any additional questions, he's your man.
Questions or comments from the dais? From the public? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3E, consider draft resolution awarding contract to Meade Electric in an amount not to exceed $166,545 for General Mills 34.5 KV expansion. Do I have a motion? Moved by Marx, seconded by Kosarag.
So by now you may be sensing a theme. So bids were advertised and opened for the labor to construction of the 34.5 KV expansion to the General Mills project, which consists of construction of one underground feeder from the Geneva Business Park substation to the General Mills property. Seven bids were received. Meade Electric was the lowest bidder at $151,404.55. The recommendation is to accept the bid from Meade and authorize the city administrator to approve change orders not to exceed 10% for a total not to exceed amount of $166,545. It should be noted that General Mills will reimburse the city for the cost of the installation. And unless he's left, which he hasn't, we still have Aaron Holton with us this evening if you have any additional questions.
Any questions or comments from the dais? From the public? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3F, consider an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed... Let me reread that. Consider an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed $30 million general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source of the City of Geneva, Kane County, Illinois, for the purpose of paying the costs of improving the electric system of said city, prescribing the details of said bonds, and providing for collection, segregation, and application of electric system revenues to the payment of said bonds, and the levy of taxes sufficient to pay said bonds if such revenues are insufficient for such payment, and providing for the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. Did you write this?
I didn't. Let me disavow that. But a lawyer did.
Ms. Dawkins? Oh.
It was...
Bowring and Marx?
Okay, so yes, that was written by bond counsel. We were told it had to be specifically written that way, so thank you for reading that. So the electric utility has identified future capacity and infrastructure needs due to the increased development in the North Geneva Business Park, the Fabian Parkway, and the South Kirk Road corridors. To fund these improvements, an alternate revenue bond must be issued. The city council approved the contracts related to the bond issuance on November 6th, and the public hearing for the bonds was on December 18th of 2023. So if recommended for approval, the bond ordinance will be considered by the city council for formal approval, and you get to read that all over again, on February 5th, 2024, to issue $30 million in alternate revenue bonds in late February. So for any additional questions, if it's financial in nature, we do have our Finance Director Reader Cruz with us, and if it's project-related, once again, Aaron Holton, the man of the evening.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the dais? From the public? Seeing none, sensing none. I mean, we have discussed this before, so this is not really new business in front of us. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3G, presentation regarding fiscal year 2025 budget and fiscal year 2026 budget projections. And we have a presentation.
You all were so quick with everything, you just couldn't wait.
I did not expect to be to this point already.
Either that, or you're so cold that you can't wait to get to your car before it has a chance to freeze again. Okay. She told me how to do this, but hold on. Ah-ha. Okay. Good evening. I feel like it wasn't that long ago that we were here talking budget, but like many things, it comes up every year about the same time, so... Tonight's presentation is just an overview of the fiscal year 2025 budget and forecast of the 2026 budget. I call it kind of a first look. The intent is to provide a general overview, not only for the city council, but also for the general public. We recognize that there are probably lots of specific questions based upon your review of the information that was contained in the evening's agenda packet, but we first want to provide you with a little bit of context to all the numbers. I would note, for the most part, while I reference 2025 budget and 2026 forecast, tonight, really, I'm going to be talking mostly about the 2025 budget, and the forecast is in the packet. I respectfully request that you save any general questions for the end of the presentation, and then submit some more specific questions for a more thorough response, and I will discuss kind of that process later in the evening. But tonight, again, is really just, you had a couple days, maybe, because you were hunkered down, if you were like me, didn't leave the house, reviewing all of the information. So tonight is really to maybe put some context to that, then we'll take some work a couple days, and then we can get specific questions and really dig into the details. Whoops. Okay. So the idiom hindsight is 2020 expresses the clarity of understanding a situation or event after it has happened. It is commonly used to highlight regret, lessons learned, or the benefit of learning from past experiences. Tonight, however, I suggest that we take a look back to celebrate and to learn from our successes over the past year, for it is with this knowledge that we are better equipped to plan for the future. Last year, as we do every year, as part of the budget process, the city council set forth their priority objectives from the city's strategic plan. As a reminder, I've listed on the slide those objectives that kind of rose to the top last year. So we had excellent municipal services, that the city provides equipment, infrastructure, and facilities necessary to maintain efficient, reliable public services, economic vitality, develop a resilient local economy through development of new and commercial industrial opportunities that add to the city's tax base, and environmental stewardship, take actions to promote long-term sustainability, and reduce the city's carbon footprint. Since we are only a little over halfway through fiscal year 2024, our walk back in time will highlight those achievements, accomplishments, and accolades that have occurred over the past year. So essentially, we're going to look back January of 2023 forward. Keep in mind the priority objectives we just reviewed as we reflect upon the last year. Excellent municipal services. In the strategic plan under the vision of excellent municipal services, we have outlined several key outcomes to help us achieve our goals. One of those outcomes is high-performing employees that strive for continuous improvement throughout the organization. Tonight, we will highlight just a few instances in which this outcome was met. Jake Huggins, shown there on the left, who started with the city in 2015 as a water sewer maintenance worker and was promoted to water treatment operator in 2021, and Brett Myers, who joined the city in 2022, both obtained their Class A Water Operator Certification. This now means that all of our water treatment operators are rated at Class A, the highest level achievable. In our police department, Deputy Chief Brian Meduzia represented Geneva proudly as he completed his term as President of the Kane County Chiefs Police Association. And meanwhile, our newest Deputy Chief, Matt Dean, who was promoted in 2022, graduated from the Northwestern School of Police Staff and Command. I would further note that, as we speak, Administrative Sergeant Brad Jurdie is currently enrolled in that same Police Staff and Command School. Patch has partnered with T-Mobile to recognize community leaders and celebrate their contributions. Our own preservation planner, Michael Lambert, was recently nominated for said recognition. Superintendent Bob Van Gescam was a recipient of the Illinois Water Environment Association's 2023 Golden Manhole Award. See the picture? We want to know, is that a real manhole that you had to lift?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Pretty close, though.
This award acknowledges an individual...so no shoulder complaints, okay? This award acknowledges an individual that has made significant contributions in promoting individual professionalism and pride among those working in the design, management, construction, operations, and maintenance of collection systems. Community Development David DeGroot, also seated here behind me, was instrumental in Geneva receiving the Bronze Award from the 2023 EV Readiness Program sponsored by the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. This new program, of which Geneva was in the first cohort of participants, was designed to help prepare municipalities to meet the growing demand for electric vehicles and EV charging infrastructure. The participants received free technical assistance and training in a variety of critical areas. And I would note that is all also why David was processing development, applications, and everything else. So in addition to his regular work, he was participating in, I don't know, how many classes?
Once, every two weeks.
Once every two weeks for, yeah, a long time, so...but it was worth it. The electric utility was recognized by the American Public Power Agency for distribution reliability by a locally-owned utility. And the Geneva Generation Facility Water Treatment Plant and Wastewater Treatment Plants all passed various inspections by the U.S. and Illinois Environmental Protection Agencies with no concerns noted. Our employees were also innovative this past year. As a result of an unfunded mandate, I'm sure you've never heard of that before, when the state of Illinois changed its CD licensing standard, staff implemented an in-house training program which saves approximately $4,500 per employee in lieu of sending employees to an external training vendor. The police and fire departments relaunched the Popular Risk Watch program in conjunction with the Geneva Park District and had over 100 participants. This camp for children ages five to seven and taught by first responders teaches how to look for potential hazards, how to prevent them, and what steps to take in the event of an emergency, all done through fun, thought-provoking activities. Finance also got in to the innovative game, who knew, by launching an in-house Excel training program for non-finance personnel. We had 12 employees participate in the class, and there were another six on the waitlist. While that may not sound like a lot, when you think about Excel and spreadsheets, who really wants to do them other than finance and Amy Mayer? Engaged public safety. The Geneva Public Police Department raised over $44,000 for Illinois Special Olympics this past year, truly showing a commitment to the greater community. The department also a first-time participant in the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police Traffic Safety Challenge, which is a friendly competition between law enforcement agencies of similar size and type. The challenge is more than a pure competition, it is a template for law enforcement agencies to identify traffic issues, plan strategies, reduce social harm, and improve the quality of life in their communities. The Geneva Police Department was awarded with Rookie of the Year and took second place in the Municipal 36 to 50 Officer category. And meanwhile, not to be left out, the Fire Department outfitted and deployed a new toy, I mean, a new advanced support utility task vehicle, also a UTV, to use on medical responses on the trail system, at special events, at the Northwest Cross Country Course, and other hard-to-reach locations. Thanks to a Firehouse Subs Grant, the department was also able to purchase a cardiac monitor for the UTV. And so I know it's very small, but you can see a picture. If you haven't seen that vehicle, it is... If you haven't seen that vehicle, it is really pretty cool. I think you all would agree. So when we look at another vision in the strategic plan is that of economic vitality. To achieve the outcomes related to this vision requires the steadfast work of many of our employees, but especially those in the Community Development Department and Economic Development Department. This slide outlines some of the big accomplishments of the city as it relates to economic vitality this past year. In May, we were able to celebrate with the Burton Foundation the grand opening celebration for Emma's Landing, Geneva's affordable housing community consisting of forty-five two- and three-bedroom townhomes for individuals and families. The past year, we also saw the addition of a new industrial development, including the Fox Valley Commerce Center. Phase one was completed in 2023 and includes a two-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot building and a two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-six-sixty-square-foot building. While community development shepherded the process to the building, economic development assisted in executing the first lease. We also celebrated the hundred-and-twentieth milestone anniversary of Burgess Norton. In the true spirit of partnership, we were able to secure the support from other taxing bodies in the state legislature to extend TIFF II and help ensure funding for the East State Street Road construction project. And we also worked with downtown property owners to gain support for the continuation and expansion of SSA Number One to support downtown services and infrastructure. And as you heard this evening, in 2023, construction began on the expansion of General Mills with a sixty-five-thousand-six-hundred-square-foot addition to their production facility and a forty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-square-foot addition to their warehouse. This secured investment by one of the city's top employers will create one-hundred-and-three new full-time jobs and capital investment in excess of a hundred-and-eighty million dollars, which includes the building expansion and equipment required for the new production lines. An objective under economic vitality is to fill longstanding vacancies on West State Street and in the Geneva Commons. This objective was met with the filling of two storefronts on State Street, Fair Game and the soon-to-be Zazu Salon, and two restaurants on the Commons, Hacienda Real and First Watch, of which I've been to both and highly recommend both, just in case you haven't. Many of the city's best practices support the vision of environmental stewardship. Most notably, the wastewater treatment plant staff has successfully reduced phosphorus loading to the Fox River from one-point-three-zero milligrams per liter in 2017 to point-three-four-eight milligrams per liter in 2023. So just to repeat, we're going from one-point-three to point-three. To put that in perspective, the daily discharge limit of point-five will be required in 2030. So we are definitely well ahead of schedule and well ahead of that goal. For the twenty-second year, the city of Geneva was named a Tree City USA. We also upgraded our snow and fleet, our snow and ice control fleet to be anti-icing-capable, kind of ironic, given the last few days, which is definitely helpful. And then, as previously mentioned, the city is EV-ready and purchased its first EV vehicle to be deployed in the fire department. So that's what that beautiful white truck is on the top, and then down below, we do have the award ceremony. To help improve the quality of life, a need and desire was identified to revive the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, a group of volunteers to assist city staff in determining priorities in the bike plan. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force created in 2021 spent the past few years conducting one-on-one interviews, hosting listening sessions, and hearing directly from key community stakeholders on topics related to Geneva's diversity efforts. The final recommendations and report were presented and accepted by the city council this past December. It's one thing to recognize ourselves, and another for others to recognize the efforts of the city council and professional staff. World Atlas, a large publishing resource in geography covering sociology, demography, environment, economic, and travel, named Geneva as one of seven Illinois' small towns with the state's best, most visit-worthy historic districts. Geneva also ranks as one of Illinois' best small town for retirees, and I quote, "Geneva is a good choice if you fancy a small, beautiful community and a suburban feel signaling a historic downtown and homely attractions." West Suburban magazine readers ranked Geneva as the premier community for dining, shopping, and festivals in its 2023 survey. No other town has earned the distinction as many times as Geneva in the two-plus decades of conducting the survey. Geneva was also chosen as the top city they would most likely like to live in, aside from their own, and downtown Geneva received first-place honors for the best downtown shopping. A city is only as good as its governance. One of the outcomes of strong governance identified in the strategic plan is that of citizen engagement is increased through the use of traditional and electronic communication. This slide shows that all of our communication outreach managed by Communications Coordinator Kevin Starr has shown an increase in engagement since 2018. So we've provided newsletter open rates, Geneva Mail open rates, because that's really more important than how many people you send it to, it's whether they actually open it. Clearly, social media is always a big growth, and then I thought it was interesting, if we look at the website, sixty percent of our users now visit our website through a mobile device as opposed to through a desktop. So we have made improvements to that website to make it mobile-friendly and be able to do things on the mobile device that you haven't previously been able to do. And the total visitors, unique visitors, and total page views, those are all just from 2023. Another stated outcome for strong governance is to maintain or improve the city's credit rating. As was announced last month, the city recently received an upgraded rating of AA1 thanks to strong governance and fiscal responsibility. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada also honored the city's accomplishments representing the highest form of achievement in governmental accounting and financial reporting. The association is a nonprofit organization serving more than twenty thousand government finance professionals. The city received the trifecta of the distinguished budget award for the twelfth consecutive year, was recognized for the ninth straight year for going above and beyond with its annual comprehensive financial report, and its sixth consecutive year for its popular annual financial report. These financial reporting and transparency efforts are a direct result of strong governance. Strong governance is also reflected in the award of various grants. This slide outlines some of the grants that have been awarded to the city over the past year, including grants for road construction and bulletproof vests. So you'll see, we've received, well, I would say, we have been awarded roughly three-point-five million in grants. Some of those are for projects coming in the next fiscal year, some of those are projects that are ongoing, some have been recently completed, but just kind of gives you an overview of all the work that's being done to secure as much funding elsewhere as we can. So if the past is any indication, then the future looks bright. Let's look at fiscal year 2025 proposed budget. The budget presented for your review and consideration is the culmination of many meetings, discussion, and planning with staff to ensure that we meet the needs of the future and the priorities identified by the city council. The budget process began in earnest in November of 2023 with the Strategic Planning Workshop, with the city council, the chairwoman from the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee, and the senior management team. Following that meeting, departments then refined their budgets and submitted them to the city administrator and finance director for review. And many of you attended some of those meetings as we went through those, and then following that meeting, departments refined their budgets and submitted, refined them, resubmitted them, we talked about them, and so for you this evening is a draft. It's the culmination of the Strategic Planning Workshop, the budget meetings with staff, and then the next step would be go over the budget, we have, I'll talk about schedule at the end. We have a public hearing and adoption, and then our new fiscal year will begin on May first of 2024. Again, keep in mind, we call it fiscal year 25, because we always name the year in which the budget cycle ends. And I would also note, the other important date on this slide is the February fifth, which is the public hearing date. So once again, the council did the exercise of setting priority objectives for 2025. This year, we had six that rose to the top. So the next two slides show what the priorities are that have been identified for 2025. I would note that although an objective in the strategic plan may not have been prioritized for the upcoming fiscal year, it's not like those go away. They're still in the plan, and we still look at action items associated with those objectives, and they're included in the budget where resources allow. Excuse me, so for fiscal year 25, again, we're looking at excellent municipal services, environmental stewardship, same two that we had last year, economic vitality, which is looking at supporting of new housing opportunities and changes that allow for greater variety of housing, economic vitality through the development of new and commercial industrial opportunities, quality of life, taking actions to promote long-term sustainability, and then, actually, I think that's wrong, I think that's environmental sustainability, I think I put the wrong wording there, so we'll get that fixed before we publish the PowerPoint. And then encouraging tourism by enhancing the city's image and better accommodating needs of visitors. So again, as we put the budget together, these are the thoughts that are at the forefront of everybody's mind when they're planning projects, when they're planning capital. These are the things that we are looking to accomplish and support. So what is the municipal budget? Seems like a basic question, but it's also important to state, and for those of you who have been here a few years, you know that I do this every year, a budget is a planning document. Many often mistakenly believe that a budget is a forecast of the amount the local government expects to spend. While that may be true, the reality is that the budget is the maximum amount allowed to be spent, absent an approved amendment. As such, expenditures at the end of a fiscal year may be below the budgeted amount. This is by design. It's not that the budget is padded, but rather that expenditures were within the budgeted plan of expenditures. And it's for this reason, as we go through the following slides, I caution a comparison between projected expenditures and the proposed budget year. A more realistic comparison is budget to budget, especially when you think that today we're only seventy-five percent through fiscal year 24. So again, we're doing this early so we can get projects out to bid and get things settled for May one, but we're also kind of still a little bit in the dark because we're only three-quarters of the way through the current budget year. So this little infographic kind of outlines the budget process, but what I really wanted to show is that budgeting is an ongoing exercise. It doesn't begin or end, it kind of continually happens. So we start with planning, we determine wants and needs, then we actually adopt a budget, and then throughout the year, we report back on the budget, we revise those plans. There are times that things come forward to the city council for consideration that maybe weren't contemplated when the budget was passed. So maybe that's something that can be fit within the current budget, because something else didn't happen, or it might need a budget amendment, so that would require a council vote. And then again, every year, we do the strategic planning, because really, that strategic plan is kind of our guiding principle. That's, you know, that's the document you go back to and you say, does what we do support that plan? And in the middle, I put stakeholders, which could be the citizens, it could be business owners, property owners, visitors, all of those we have to keep also in mind as we continual in this circle, circle of budgeting life. I would make just a brief note that we are, as you may recall, in the midst of updating the strategic plan. So by the next fiscal year, my guess is that you would have an updated strategic plan to be, again, kind of that reporting and feedback, constantly looking at the cycle. There are various roles and responsibilities associated with the creation, preparation, and adoption of the budget. There's the budget officer, which is myself, who recommends the budget based upon the strong governance principles, the general operational and capital needs of the city, and ensures that the recommended budget is balanced, which means the revenues equal or exceed expenditures, and the city council has the sole authority by majority vote to adopt the annual budget. And since the budget is a planning document, and ultimately, things can and do change, the city council also has the authority to amend the budget by a two-thirds vote. So, are we ready to jump into it? Thank you. Okay. So, general fund, here's our little budget breakdown. The city council should be proud of the work they've accomplished over the past several years. The city is on solid financial footing based upon decisions and actions taken by the council. An upgraded AA1 rating for Moody's, I will keep touting that as much as I can, and recognition by the Government Finance Officers Association for the city's efforts in budgeting and financial reporting is evidence of this. The general fund projections, based upon year-end estimates and the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget, indicates that the city will maintain a fund balance exceeding the goal of at least ninety days in operating expenditures, which is in compliance with our financial policies. This is the result of the city making a concerted effort, not only following the Great Recession and then COVID, but it also positions the city with the resources to provide flexibility to meet unexpected costs and position the city to take advantage of unexpected opportunities. In addition, the city continues to be in a position to make significant investments in facilities, equipment, and infrastructure, going back to that strategic plan, excellent municipal services. And even with inflation and reduced purchasing power, the city is well-positioned due to prudent planning and strategic thinking. So the slide before you provides a summary of the general fund. Revenues are on the left, and then expenditures on the right, so the revenues on the left are relatively flat compared to fiscal year 2024 budget. The increase seen is related to the use of approximately one million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act, and I will talk a little bit about that a little bit later in the presentation. Currently, we are forecasting that revenues will remain flat in fiscal year 2026. So you'll see there, I broke it out by kind of our major revenue sources. We have property tax, sales tax, they're pretty close in income, and then others, everything other than property sales tax, state income tax, non-home real sales tax, or grants, and permits are in that other.
The property tax, is that just the city's portion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so, and I do not have, that's a good question, because I do not have my usual slide of the dollar bill. The city's portion of the property tax bill is still right at six percent, maybe ticking a little, right at six, give or take. Yeah. So, and we don't have the final numbers, but we, yeah, so that six million dollars is just the city's portion of your tax bill. Thank you. On the right-hand side are the expenditures, and I've broken them out by function. So as opposed to breaking them out by individual departments, I thought this was a better representation to talk about function, because the intention is that it takes all departments to make a city run effectively and efficiently. And as you can see, not unexpected, public safety is our largest piece of the pie, but without general government and administrative services and without public works, and this really makes public works look good, I think Rich paid me off to make their budget look, appear smaller than everybody else's, really makes everything work, right? They, all of those support the other, so it can go up the chain, down the chain, or around the circle. For a little more flavor, this slide represents all expenditures accounted for in the general fund by category. So our broad categories are personnel, contractual, commodities, and then everything else. And you can see on there, I've kind of listed what falls within those categories. The percentages across the bottom, the colors match up, so that's the percentage of general fund are from which category. So for example, the navy blue, seventy-four percent of the general fund budget is comprised of personnel expenses, which includes wages, payroll taxes, medical, dental, life insurance, workers' comp, and pension expense, and fourteen percent of the budget is for contractual items like insurance, utility costs, training, and the like. I would note that while seventy-four percent seems high, you'll see when we talk about other budgets, the personnel is less, because in the general fund budget, you're supporting the general operations of the city, which are your police officers, your firefighters. Most of your personnel falls within the general fund. So that, while that seems high, it's really not that far off when you consider what it is the general fund covers and what the general fund does. I mean, that's your snow plowing, kudos to the snow plows this weekend, all of those general government services. But if you want to really kind of dig down into it, personnel expenses are up six percent over the fiscal year 2024 amended budget. This is mostly attributable to the recently completed compensation and classification study that was presented to council last fall. The direction given at that time was to work towards the seventy percent of the market, and the budget does just that. In addition, the budget also includes a recommendation to add one-point-seven-five full-time equivalent employees. That would include a full-time police officer, a part-time diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging coordinator, and increasing the hours for a payroll and benefit specialist position from twenty-four hours a week to thirty hours a week. Just to touch on those positions a little bit, it has been proven extremely challenging to recruit, retain, and hire new police officers. We have at least five officers eligible for retirement with more in the out years, and the addition of a full-time officer would enable us to have adequate staffing to provide regular traffic enforcement and backfill when officers are in training and absorb the loss of officers through retirement or other means. I would note, we just had a conversation today that I think we had five officers on our list. That list will be exhausted, so that means we have to start testing all over again, while we have had some success with hiring new officers. Officer Warren, is just this week your first week on your own?
No, since the middle of December.
Since the middle, oh, okay, three weeks. So, welcome. We're finding it's more and more difficult to hire. We go through the process. We've had a couple of great lateral hires as well, so we're doing both, but it's a constant challenge. So even though we're recommending adding a full-time police officer, I think the reality is, you will never see us, well, I hope you see us fully staffed, but it's rare that we are fully staffed for any long period of time. And I'm sure the chief can attest to that. The DEIB coordinator was a direct recommendation from the DEI task force. So the recommendation here is to start with a part-time employee, which provides the opportunity to create the position and kind of make sure we know what that position is going to do, who it reports to, where it sits, what its goals are, and then if we find that that work is sufficient and we need more work, then we could come back at a later date to recommend an increase. But to start, we always start with new positions on the conservative side and start with part-time employee. And then lastly, the increased hours for the payroll and benefit specialist is support, to support the HR manager, to continue to focus on system improvements, legal compliance, and the ever-changing complexities of human resource management. If anybody, which we all did, lived through COVID, you will know that HR was instrumental in getting us all through that, because the rules were constantly changing. So, that's that. I would also note that we did have two other requests for personnel that I have, that are not recommended for inclusion in the fiscal year 2025 budget at this time. It includes a part-time body worn camera technician and a part-time fire inspector. The thought here is that these are new positions that we do not currently have, and they need a little further evaluation. Let's get things onboard. Let's get things working, and then if we determine that we need those positions, we can always come back and ask for them. As I said in the beginning, the budget is a planning document, so that doesn't mean that it's set in stone for all time. It's set in stone for the time right now, because it's what we think we need to start the fiscal year. So this slide shows that contractual expenses are up fifty-five percent over the fiscal year 24 budget. While this may seem alarming at first blush, this is mostly attributable to the $1 million that was budgeted from the ARPA funds, as mentioned earlier. This money is anticipated to be used to assist with exterior and interior renovations for historic commercial properties for economic development purposes. So I have similar graphs for our other two major funds. The electric fund, similar to the general fund slide, the slide represents revenues on the left and expenditures by function on the right. The majority of revenue is derived from sale of electricity, and similarly, the largest expenditures are purchased power, but you will see here, and from all of the items on the agenda tonight, that capital is running a close second. And then again, it's just electric sales, the 1.2 grant, I believe, is the Rebuild Illinois. When you see the word reappropriation, just for everybody's benefit, that's a, that's a transfer from the fund balance. So it's not a bad word. We plan for that. It's just a fancy word. Spell check doesn't like the word, so just, maybe it's not a word. So again, I, I broke it down a little bit in more detail, so again, the, the percentages at the bottom match the percentages on the left, and they go in order, so while I have two navy blues up there on the far left and on the far right, they're both seven percent, so it doesn't matter if you get confused. Personnel makes up seven percent of the budget, and capital makes up seven percent of the budget. Oh, I think you're right. I think the forty-nine percent is contractual, so my colors are off. Another error. Thank you. Yeah, capital should be where contractual is. They should be green, so see the second, so I, I'll fix that. Forty-nine percent of the budget is-
But next to capital, it also says the same thing.
Yeah, I know. I, thank you. The cold, I'm telling you. We'll get it all fixed. That's why this is a general overview. Yikes. How many people reviewed this? No. I'm going to be like Joe Coy, the comedian from the Golden Globes, when people didn't laugh at his jokes, he immediately threw the writers under the bus. So, how many, no, I'm just kidding. They're all great. It's all on me. So again, to add a little flavor, you'll see debt service and depreciation is up sixty-two percent over fiscal year twenty-four. So this is directly attributable to the $30 million bond issuance, so that's our interest payment is 1.2 million, and that's for additions and improvements to the electric system. This budget also recommends the addition of a journey lineman to assist in maintaining the substation and meter infrastructure. We would note that the substations are increasing from ten today to fourteen in the span of twenty-four to thirty-six months. There was also a request for a general maintenance position, but that has not been included in the recommended budget, but we do feel that the journey lineman, not only for the increase in infrastructure, but also again, for succession planning, because we do have several retirements that are likely on the horizon. And then we have the water and wastewater fund. So again, chart should be familiar, hopefully correct. On the left is the revenue. On the right are the expenditures. Similar to electric, a majority of revenue is derived from water and sewer sales, and the expenditures are fairly equally split between capital investments and the production, treatment, and distribution and collection of water and wastewater. I would note here, though, in this particular instance, other financing makes up nearly half the revenues. This is showing a 9.5 million dollar loan from the IEP A and also use of reserves. And then again, as you can see on the right, our capital program is ambitious. That's planned for fiscal year twenty-five, and we'll talk a little bit about that in the time to come. Not necess, not necessarily tonight. Okay, so by now, you should recognize this chart. Fifty-one percent of the budget is comprised of capital expenditures, and I have the wrong description, but the right word, so, and the right percentage, and then nine percent being personnel. So, wow, that's all off. Okay. Just, don't look at that. Oh, and I also printed these all off for you. Sorry, Brad, I actually printed these because you always ask for them. I have them. They're sitting on my desk, right there. So if you want to, if you want to grab the stack and pass them out, but they're all going to be wrong now, so, again, mea culpa. So, here we go. To add a little more flavor, to drive home the point, capital investment for fiscal year twenty-five is planned to be 158% greater than in fiscal year twenty-four. A majority of this anticipated expenditure is for the sanitary sewer river crossing. This is a dual-pipe crossing that will provide for improved maintenance and redundancy in the sanitary sewer system. And the recommended budget also includes the addition of a water treatment plant operator. We would note that the water treatment plant has operated with three personnel since its opening in 2007, and as the plant ages, it, there is more maintenance required. In addition, 2022 saw the retirement of the longtime plant supervisor, and while the current supervisor, Mike Anderson, who's been with the city seventeen years, is certainly capable, he's also contemplating a future retirement. So the addition of a plant operator will ensure a smooth transition as we prepare for the future. I would also note that another request was made for a laboratory and pre-treatment coordinator for the wastewater treatment plant, and again, for right now, that position is not being recommended at this time. So beyond the three major funds, general, electric, and water, we also have several fairly large capital funds. We have the general capital projects fund, the infrastructure capital projects fund, and the capital equipment fund. So general capital projects are all of those capital projects that don't fall in one of the other two categories, but also don't fall under one of the enterprise funds, so it doesn't fall under electric or underwater wastewater. So the general capital projects fund are for things like build and repair and improvements or various special projects in your packet. I don't recall what page, but there's a chart that lists out all of the anticipated capital projects for the year, so you might want to review that and get your questions ready for that for, for the next couple of weeks. The infrastructure capital projects fund is just what it sounds like, annual street, sidewalk, streetscape, pavement markings, roadway program, various infrastructure. You'll see on the little pie chart, I kind of break it out by what we're talking about doing, storm sewer five percent, Cal's Road is a big chunk of that, part of that. We have grant funding for. Most of the infrastructure capital projects fund is funded with the half percent non-home rule sales tax that we did by referendum back in 2007. That's dedicated solely for infrastructure. And then the capital equipment is, again, pretty self-explanatory. That's all of the vehicles and equipment, and so you see it's pretty split between machinery and equipment and vehicles with a little small sliver for computer equipment. And again, in your packet are the listings by fund of all of the anticipated capital projects. So, it's a lot of information, high level, a lot of me talking, but just to give you kind of all funds, like the skinny, it's almost like the popular annual financial report, but this is the popular annual budget report, skinny, skinny. So if you look at fiscal year 2025, which is the recommended budget before you, and compare it to fiscal year 2024 amended budget, you'll see that personnel costs are actually down 2.5%. I know, everybody's scratching their head. How does that happen? Well, it happens because you have retirements, so you have, somebody retires, you hire somebody new, you have a little bit of restructuring. In other words, every year, we look at how wages are allocated to the funds, so if somebody is spending a majority of their time in one of the enterprise funds, we allocate some of their wages to that fund, or vice versa. We take, we reallocate every year based on actual job duties. The other thing I would note, and I didn't look it up, but somewhere during the last year, for IMRF, which is our Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, so everybody who is not a police or firefighter, that's the pension plan they're in, we actually are now about fifty-fifty split between tier one and tier two, which is some savings for the city. Same thing with police and fire, and actually, in police and fire, we're seeing it even further. We have more tier-two employees than we have tier-one employees. So that helps in your personnel expenses as well. Operations are up 1.8. I'm a little surprised that that number's as low as it is when you think about all of the contracts and all of the commodities that we're just seeing, prices are up. But what that does tell me is that the senior management team and all of their employees worked really hard to try to keep a budget as flat as possible, but still make sure we're ensuring that we're providing the, the quality of service that we want to provide. And then capital is up 0.7%. So the pie chart on the right, I wanted to put up here to show, so this is, this is all funds. So, and the next slide will show you, but for, for our newer folks, the city has thirty-seven different funds, so we have basically thirty-seven individual budgets that we present. So this is taking all of those funds together, and if you took them all together and broke them out by personnel, capital, and operations, this is how it breaks out. So if you recall earlier, I said that in the general fund, seventy-nine percent of the, or seventy-four percent of the budget is personnel expenses. When you look at all the funds together, we're actually 22%, and most of it is operations and capital, which is really how it should be, but you still need the people to do the operations and to do the capital. I would also note, though, operations, probably roughly fifty percent of operations there is actually our electric purchase power. So if you back that out, then that all changes, so it's kind of, while I try to simplify it, it's not as easy as this pie chart may make it, may appear. So in other words, things in the mirror are not as close as they seem. That's kind of what this chart is like. So here's, here's all the numbers you've been dying to see, so that you can go cross-eyed and glossy-eyed. This chart shows all thirty-seven funds. The number in parenthetical notation after general, special revenue are the number of different budgets within that fund. So we only have one general fund, but special revenue, we have twenty-one different budgets or different funds. Those are your SSAs. Got enterprise, internal service, trust and agency are your two pension funds. So if you just, the bottom number is total expenditures across all funds. I think that's always a difficult number to look at, because if you think about electric, with a $30 million capital program, that immediately raises your budget. So if you're only looking at the bottom number, I think you're missing out on all of the flavor that's really happening within the budget. So you really have to look at them individually, and again, in the packet tonight, there is a summary page that lists each, each fund separately, so that will help. So again, if you look at the general fund, the amended budget was 24.3 million. Our recommended budget is 25 million. Really, the difference there is that million dollars we're transferring in from ARPA. So, does that make sense so far? Okay, look at it hard, because in two minutes, I'm going to ask you to repeat the numbers. So what are, what is our, what are our next steps? What do we, where do we go from here? We are proposing that next Monday, we have a special committee of the whole meeting for a policy discussion. That's on the grant funding program we've been talking about over the past year. Then on the 29th, that's the fifth Monday. It's reserved on the calendar. It's only there if the council desires to meet on that night to talk more, if they feel like their questions get answered over the next couple of weeks and don't need that date. We won't meet that date, but that's there for your convenience and your use. The public hearing would be on February 5th at the regular city council meeting, and then ideally, the council would adopt the 2025 budget. We can't legally adopt the fiscal year 26 budget, but we provide that information mostly for capital planning, because again, the reason we went to kind of this earlier budget cycle, meaning passing it in February and doing two years, was so that our capital projects could get out to bid in the spring, even though they can't start until May when the budget starts. We can at least have the bids out on the street, be ready to go, and shovels in the ground by May 1. Instead of the way we used to do it, we would pass the budget in late April, and shovels in the ground aren't until almost August, and you've lost half your construction season. So what I am proposing, it's a lot of information. It was a lot of information in the packet. So tonight really wasn't for the detailed questions. The process we've used in the past, which I think has worked well, is similar to council meeting packets. Submit your questions to me. If you can submit them by Friday, ideally around noonish, but if it's a little later, it's not a hard cutoff, what we would do is compile all of those questions and answers. We would post them on Monday, and then certainly, we can discuss it that Monday night at the meeting. I do, before I end too, I don't want to forget, as you see, we have a big audience tonight. So I do want to thank all of our senior management team, all of our superintendents, our facilities manager, our HR manager, our new police officer, everyone who's here, because they all had a part in this. While I'm the talking head, I don't do this alone. I do it with a great staff and a great bunch of people. And again, for those of you who were able to participate in some of the budget meetings, I think you see how collaborative they are. It's really them sharing what their needs and wants are and seeing how it, how it fits in the budget. So the draft budget, and it's a draft because it still can be changed, is in the packet tonight. Tomorrow, we will send out for the old-school folks, we will send out, or the former, the long-term, I shouldn't say old, we'll send out the spreadsheets, because I know some, some people like to dabble in those Excel spreadsheets, so they might have taken Rita's class, I'm not sure, or Heather's class. So we'll send those out tomorrow, so if you want to do, I do caution, though, about doing a line-by-line kind of budgeting, because that's not really what the budget is. The budget is the collective, and that's kind of what I tried to show here tonight, that it's not about this lineup went up and this lineup went down and this lineup, it's, it's really about, does it support the strategic goals that the council has set forward, and are we doing what the council thinks we should be doing? So with that, that concludes my first look. It's not the car show first look. It's a lot cheaper. So I'm happy to take any general questions, if it's about process or about scheduling, but I would request, and if there's an easy, specific question, we do have folks here, but we will also have whoever you need at the next meetings as well. So, thank you.
Any general questions from the dais?
And we will post the, post the PowerPoint on the website once I clean up all my errors and I can see straight, and I will also- and I can see straight, and I will also, if you would like, it'll be on the website, so I'll just let you know once it's posted, if you want to print off a clean copy, so.
Thank you, it was very helpful. Alder Person, Maladra.
Yeah, not a, not a question, just a comment, I like the way you presented it this year. I like the focus on change, what's different from last year, and why. I think that's kind of the crux of the whole exercise, at least from my perspective, so I appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I would concur with Alder Person, Maladra, and I think we see what we need to see, and how it was presented informs us greatly, so thank you. Nothing else? And kudos to everyone that worked on it. We are on to item four, public comment. We don't have any public here, so we shall move on. We've got item five, closed session on pending litigation. I always forget how this works, made a motion...
But also say there will be no action taken.
Oh, there will be no action taken following that, this closed session meeting, when we come back.
I move that we go into closed session to discuss pending litigation by ILCS 122C11.
Moved by Bowring. Do I have a second? Second by Mayor. Is that a roll call?
If you want, you don't have to.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, a motion to come back into open session. Bowring, and who is that? Kasarag? Who's writing this stuff?
You can, you can do it.
I have it, if you want, the call roll, but you can do a voice call.
Okay, voice, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are back in open session.
We give a new business...
Any new business from the council here? Seeing none, sensing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Kasarag to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.[1784.82]